Units contain, the gasoline is contained in there, the dispensers are contained, you know, are a part of this. It needs no one to operate it, credit card, the whole thing. What they are thinking about is locating it on the more northerly eastern part of Boardman Road. And so the question that why I am here is the fact that it is something, it's essential, it's an essential service that's needed on the island, just like public safety or all the other services, we have to have gasoline here. And what I want to ask is for the board of selectmen and town manager to consider a committee of looking into the town getting involved in this essential service that's needed on the island and looking at other locations. You know, part of what they were doing in the reconfiguration, when the garage went, they wanted the garage gone for parking because of the concern that everything gets congested with the post office and everything else. So it just, you still have the problem of the gas, the gas services there. And I just, you know, I don't know why it has to be right there at that store. And for the town to be looking at again, whether a committee is set up to investigate, look into other locations on the island because this thing is self, it can be anywhere. You know, whether it wants to be located at Dirkie, whether it wants to be located in Dark Harbor, the island, you know, if the town has has land. But again, I have concerns about Boardman Road, what's going to happen with coming in and out of Boardman Road because the traffic from the way, again, it's, this is only in a proposal, they're just looking at it. And that's why I wanted to come here sooner than later before things develop further on on this matter, because the traffic would be flowing where it would be coming from the road alongside the store and then coming onto Boardman Road. And it changes the size. And again, you still go back to that same problem of congestion, safety. When there are other places that this self-contained unit can go.
So just one quick question, are you, are you here advocating for the town to open a gas station?
No, I am here for the town to look into and just like the town, you know, because looking at broadband. So the town got involved with, you know, looking into broadband again as a central service because it's helping sustain the economic sustainability of the town. I know it's great, I've been here for two days and not been working for two days. So I'm, you know, looking at the town also, is there a way that the town can support? Whether you work with, you know, because IEFC has said there, you know, can be grant money, there can be grants that are looked into to help with. Apparently this unit costs $250,000 or some estimate, I mean, they're all, it's all new information that just basically came out. So just like broadband, the town got involved in that, came to the town where, you know, it was supportive and.
Okay, so a couple of thoughts, so the IEFC, I'm on the board of the IEFC, I'm not actively involved in that particular project, but I'm aware of sort of generally speaking what's going on there. And I don't think at this point, anything is moving forward with that respect. And so the other, the other side of that is the IEFC is not a town. It's a quasi municipal organization. And so what, yeah, okay. So we don't actually, I mean, the board members make the decisions, but the select board has the ability to replace the board members, but not to make decisions for the organization. With the exception that I believe one of the requirements is that the town manager and a select board member are a part of the board of this organization. So it's, it's sort of a strange sort of cross between the town and an independent organization. So there's some level of control, but the select board couldn't, for example, vote to tell the IEFC to do something. And so I think with, so I agree that gas is a essential service. And I think that's something that was borne out in a lot of the questionnaires that went out ahead of, ahead of the IEFC even, IEFC even forming. I don't, I don't know what to think about the town getting involved with gasoline on the island, especially when there's a store that's involved. I mean, I, I don't know what to think about that. I'm sort of hopeful that the, the gas need on the island will be less in the future. And one of the things that I personally have advocated for on the board is that instead of thinking about revamping the gasoline system, we might think about trying to move the island towards alternative energy vehicles. I think Islesborough is a great place for electric vehicles and I think that high speed chargers, which is something that's being talked about as well at the store, is probably a better use of money than to spend a bunch of money on upgrading. But that, you know, that being said, I think there's going to be a need for gasoline for the foreseeable future in some respect, whether it's for, you know, any number. But those are, those are sort of my initial thoughts. I'll open it up to the select.
Can I just ask, you know?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, but the island did get involved with broadband. I'm not asking the island, you know, that the town is opening up a gas station. That's not what I'm here, you know, to be asking. What I'm asking is that the town look into a way for the town to help support, you know, an essential service, gasoline. It doesn't necessarily, I mean, let's say the pumps break there tomorrow. Does that mean that that unit necessarily has to come? The island has to have gas? And I think looking at an alternative site. Because it continues to create again, that safety and congestion, which my understanding is part of what IEFC, why, again, I'm repeating myself in terms of the garage being going so that they got the parking and now you're going to be creating a problem again. And.
Okay.
For the town, looking into alternatives, like just like you're looking into changing things for the health center and all of that. It's an essential, you know, service for the island. And why not looking into something further on this and, you know?
Thoughts from other select board members about?
I'm trying to think of a way that the, that I would think as individuals, any of us could bring suggestions to the IEFC. How does that work?
The board, the, the board meetings are open to the public.
Yeah. So it may be more appropriate for, for you and others like you, including myself, that's something I would say would be a good message to give to the IEFC if they're working on this, to look at other options other than right there. I'm not sure that that's, if there's a role for the town for, in the select work per se, but.
Well, to that then, I mean, you just got through saying that it's a strange relationship because, you know, although you can't tell them, the town manager, the selectman, the representative from the board of selectmen on the IEFC committee, then why can't the town be getting involved in a discussion? You know, the select, the representative from the board of selectmen and the town manager be having this discussion? I mean, because this could go at the airport, you know, what's to keep it from, you know? I'm just saying, yeah, it can be in an area where there isn't that congestion or safety.
My question would be, if it's not across the street in the island market, where would you put it?
Well, that's what I'm saying, that, you know, can be looked at. Well, I mean, maybe there's more room as to how much congestion is in Dirkie across the street, you know? I, I don't know, but I think that you, the problem continues to get created and then you're going to be having, creating more of a safety issue and a problem, you know, with access to Boardman Road coming and going. Also, you still have the traffic, you know, if they're going to come out onto Boardman Road and then go out onto the main road. It's still, I don't see where anything gets resolved and.
That's clarification. You said that Sky and Marianne are the ones that own the gas pumps, correct?
They own the gas pump. They're not in a position to change what is there now because of the cost. And IEFC has proposed possibly where they can come in, find grant money, et cetera.
But Sky and Marianne would still be owning it as a private entity, correct?
They would be.
Cause the grant would be going from IEFC to Sky and Marianne.
Or other grants.
So I think we're a little premature in talking about the IEFC proposing anything. The IEFC, I think, has looked into alternatives because right now the, the gasoline system probably ought to be upgraded and changed in some way. I think the question is if that happens, one, the cost is beyond the scope of, of what the owners can, can pay for and what the, the volume of sales can support. And then how do we think about what to do with that? So I don't think that there, there is a proposal that anybody is actively considering other than chasing down, what are some possibilities that could exist there? And I, and my understanding is that the, the possibilities are cost prohibitive. I mean, there, you could, you could find someone who might put that money in, but it's not, it's not something that is going to generate a return on investment. You're not going to get the money back. You're sinking the money into a system which is. So I think that's sort of where it sits and I don't believe that there is anything actively moving forward with respect to upgrading the fuel system right now, not to my knowledge.
Well, I think that they are looking at proposals there.
Yeah, right. They're talking about what could, what's a possibility there.
So my thought process on that is I don't know that the select board has a position or would want to take a position telling a private entity what they could, you can't do with it. The planning board might be a more, because they will have to look at the, every, all of that going.
There certainly would be permits that would have an opportunity.
Since they would still be the ones that would own it. I don't know.
Well, if someone else.
Get to more.
But if it, if it was not located at the store, you know, if they decide that they don't want to be, they only pump when they bought the store, you know, then. So it doesn't mean that they have to have gasoline. I mean, I'm not sure how profitable it is for them, you know, how much revenue is generated for them from, you know, having gasoline. And again, if this is a separate container, everything's there, you know, where no one from the store needs to be involved, et cetera, you know?
Yeah, my, um, yeah, my take is I do think, I agree that few access to fuel on the island is definitely an essential service. I think is a sensitive issue if it's a private entity that owns it and wants to make upgrades where in that case permitting is most appropriate for any proposal that those folks want to do. I think, I don't know if others have approached IEFC or if IEFC has considered kind of putting out a do we kind of meet more research or outreach to understand if others would be interested in getting involved or researching this service as a business? Because I think, you know, if it's not a town owned, you know, if it's not making money, it needs to be of, you know, there, there needs to be a financial model. And one is like what we did with the broadband and creating kind of a quasi municipal sort of entity to own it. And others are kind of what, what I'm sure that they're exploring at the island market or if others are interested in exploring, I think. But I do think it, it is a conversation that I'm not aware of anything that's going on at the IE, yes, at the IEFC. So I feel like to my understanding, they're looking for leaders to support projects that they want to move forward as businesses. And the island market is a place where we currently get gas. If there are other places that people are looking at, I, I feel like it would be hard for, as a town to say, we want gas at Dirkie's as a pri, as another private entity. It just feels like imposing a business structure on some, on, on a private individual. But I, so I, that's a lot of rambling. Did you?
Familiar with rambling.
Take a step back right now. There was, for some reason, the, the pumps failed at the island market and they decided they were not going to have gas pumps anymore, right? And there is no gas, you know, there's no gas station on the island at that point. I think you would, you'd probably find a receptive select board to talk about how to resolve that issue. And because I think it is an essential service and I think you'd find the IEFC at that point actively seeking perhaps to facilitate a gas station on the island. You might even find support for the town creating a gas station at that point. Because I think if you look at the numbers, you probably cannot find, you probably cannot make a business out of a gas station on the island. And of course, the things change, right? I mean, there's the, if the fare rates go through the roof and it's no longer cost effective to go to the mainland and get your gas, maybe that makes it more viable. There's all sorts of possibilities out there in the world about that. But I think right now the reality is it's not cost effective to put in a gas station on the island. And so like, it's hard to know where to go with that because there is one right now, we're not up against not having gas on the island. And so I, I mean, I will say you certainly are going to have an opportunity to comment on anything that is any permit that's being applied for anything that's going to happen. You're, you're certainly more than welcome to show up at IEFC meetings and have a conversation about it there. I can't recall when the next meeting is.
I, I don't.
But I think, you know, there's certainly no harm in having the conversation. There's going to be an opportunity for input to the extent that anything is moved forward to the point where there's actually someone seeking a permit for something, because that's something if you were, you would need a permit for that and probably multiple permits. There would be an opportunity to have, to comment on state permits, on local permits and on being part of that process. So you know, you're not going to be shut out of a process that happens there and not have an opportunity to participate. And so.
But I guess I would add that attending the next IEFC and making your thing known early on would be good. Yeah.
Or talk to any of the members.
Yeah.
Which maybe already have, I don't know, but.
She's talking to two tonight.
Here we are.
My thought is.
I talked to two of them.
Talked to two, I mean, I guess we both, I think we're there.
But there's other members besides the two I talked with.
We do vote, we do vote. Just shit his boat. So can and do vote. But yeah, come on by the next IEFC meeting, but I, I mean, my understanding is there isn't anything that's close to moving forward at that location right now. I think more, yeah, come on by the next meeting, we'll talk more about it. And again, this is, this is, there's, there's others on that committee who are more actively involved in this particular project than me, who are spending a lot of time thinking about possibilities, thinking about redesigning parking so that it's safer for everybody. And so like, that's an ongoing conversation. It's going on between the IEFC who may provide funding. It's ongoing between the owners of the store. There's just, there's moving parts there and I don't think that there's a, a large scale change about to take place. And certainly there's going to be time to talk about that before that.
But we're all excited about the parking improvement.
I think, I think so. It's sometimes with, with that gone, it's, some people don't, people are parking in different directions now.
Well, that's why they're trying to formulate.
Yeah, there's at least space to create a better situation right now.
People avoid all the bad.
Change, the change is hard too.
Yeah, and that's one of the concerns also, I mean, because then it goes to the Boardman Road and then you've got, you know. Anyway.
Well, thank you for coming. Anybody else here for visitor comments and petitions? Joanna, Linda?
Linda, are you here for any? To hear Laura report on the latest on the municipal building project because I'm writing an article for the paper and I'm going to get it right.
Great. We're glad you're here.
So it's okay if I?
You can stay if you want. It's a public meeting or you can go. There's no judgment either way.
Well, a little bit.
Tune in when she gets home.
There you go. Yeah. Well, thank you.
No problem at all.
I feel just very well heard.
Good, thank you for coming.
I really appreciate that.
First on the, so next on the agenda, ferry service update. There was an advisory board meeting last week that John King attended. The commissioner was there. I talked to John about it. It sounds, the writing on the wall is not good, I think, for ferry rates. And I think that they are actively reviewing the ferry service. And I, I, my reading between the lines, I think the review is an effort to reduce or eliminate support from the highway fund, which at this point provides 50% of the operating funds for the ferry service. So there's a real question about the, what may happen with that. And again, nothing is set in stone now, but there's an active evaluation by the DOT of the main state ferry service with an eye for funding from the highway fund.
Deep funding from the highway fund?
Perhaps, perhaps. I, I've heard the commissioner say this multiple times and it sounds to me as his position is that the ferry should not get funds from the highway fund. And then you, and you're going to, you may end up with a more bitter dispute between islands who are then having to perhaps make up more costs from other islands or not, or how they try to handle apportionment of costs for the various ferries. And there's a lot of open and unknown questions, but it's not a great thing, I don't think, for the, for the future of ferry rates on Islesborough and perhaps more particularly on other islands where I think they may go up.
Was that in a statue or something?
There is a statute that requires the highway fund to cover at least 50% of the operating costs of the main state ferry service. It would require a statutory change.
Yeah.
The folks who are on the transportation committee in Augusta, there is no one who lives, I think there's one person who lives near the coast and the rest are not near the coast at all, let alone on islands. So you don't, I don't think you have a lot of support on the transportation committees for spending a lot of money on supporting the ferry service.
Well, we have the governor. Doesn't she go to buy them or pay them?
Sure, I, there's, the governor is a possibility, right? And you could potentially, if you could potentially veto something, I suppose. All right. I would, I would. That strikes me as not a great position to be in, to be looking for the governor to yield legislation that is going to up your ferry rates by, you know, 100%. But anyway, I don't need to raise the alarm, but I think that's, that's the general feeling on the ferry service advisory board about the direction of the current investigation by the DOT into the main state ferry service. I suspect if the commissioner were here, he would disagree with that. But I do think that is, that is the purpose of what is going on in Augusta right now with respect to looking at highway funds in the ferry service. So I wish I had better news. John may be able to give, ask him to come to the next meeting and give his own perspective since he was personally there at the meeting. Perhaps can you put that on your list and ask him to come to the next meeting and talk about it himself? Since he's the active member on the advisory board.
Yeah. When, what's the timeline for that study wrapping up?
Well, it was supposed to be done a while ago, but they put it off during the pandemic. And so I don't know what the timeline is. And there's an ongoing evaluation that was started by the Island Institute with respect to looking at a holistic review of the main state ferry service and trying to, I'm not sure exactly, modernize if that's the word or not. But a review of ferry service that's being done, I believe in conjunction with the state, the state is actively cooperating and supplying information as needed. And that may be part of the state's review. I'm not really clear exactly what that review is. There wasn't a lot of guidance that I saw in the committee meeting that resulted in this directed to the DOT to look into operating costs.
Yes, another question. What is the timing in the legislature as far as committee appointments?
I don't know about that either, but I, I don't know. I mean, I know that every advisory board meeting, this is something that several folks asked about where they are in the process. And up until now, up until the last meeting, they had been nowhere in the process and nothing has started. The advisory board has asked to be a participant in the process and have appointed somebody from the advisory board, Dennis Damon, to be the advisory board representative on the committee that looks into this particular issue. And up until the last meeting, every time we have asked for an update, there has been no update given. They haven't been moving forward. And it sounds like now the wheels are going to start moving forward. And so, but other than that, I don't know about the timing of appointments. I don't know what their goal is to finish, other than it's supposed to be finished, you know, maybe a year ago. And hasn't been moving.
Is there someone you think is going off or you think?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I, you know, I feel like here's where I need to like to get on my civics book because I don't, is it the Speaker of the House that appoints people to committees? I don't.
I don't.
But I'm just, I mean, I, I feel like it's worth reaching out to our representatives now to say we would love to see your representation on the transportation committee on our behalf. I think before those appointments are made.
Yeah, and if there's an opportunity to have folks on the transportation committee who are considering this, it would certainly be beneficial to all the islands that have people who at the very least are familiar with the coast of Maine and with islands and with island life.
Yeah.
It doesn't help to have folks from Central Maine.
This Island Institute Ferry Service Needs Assessment Survey.
Yes, related.
Related to that, okay. That's supposed to be coming out shortly.
Is the Island Institute getting more active in terms of, on behalf of the islands?
Yes, they're actively.
Legislative.
Yes, I think they are and they're actively, they've actively taken on the transportation issue. Whereas before they stayed away from it, viewing it as perhaps one island against another. When their rate issues were going on and, and it seemed as though the issue was a zero sum, one island wins, one island loses kind of thing. They didn't really want to get involved, involved and advocate on one side or another. But I think perhaps the issue now is, is broader and systemic for the main state ferry service. And to the point where the Island Institute is, is jumping in to work with all of the islands, which is a good thing. And I think the islands generally speaking are are working together. And I think that the members on the advisory board can see the writing on the wall and that perhaps we're all in a bigger boat together than may have seen the last rate issue, rate increase.
When are they going to switch over to the small ferry?
I don't know the answer to that.
You mean for Maggie going off for?
Is that a lie?
I haven't heard any. I can ask them, I can email.
I think it may be worth, because I thought I heard from one of the crew that it was expected to happen.
I heard from somebody today in here too, that they thought they heard that.
Maybe soon.
Everybody's gonna.
Did you hear when?
June.
Oh, you heard in June.
I heard that it's going to be the week before graduation, which is going to cause so much fun.
Anything else on ferries before we move forward? Hearing none. Sea level rise update Shay.
Um, our next sea level rise committee meeting is Thursday, June sixteenth at five thirty. Place to be determined. I think this room might be um even used already. But at that meeting, Gabe McPhail is going to be here in person. She's the consultant who is helping us to to get us enrolled in the, in the state's community resilience partnership program. Part of that program, as I've mentioned before, is um identifying, kind of doing a self-assessment and I prioritizing a list of community actions. That is, kind of that prioritization is what she's gonna be helping with us with, helping us with in person on the sixteenth. Once that process is complete, the step that is important for the select board to complete is to pass a municipal resolution. Um, and so in your packet is a draft resolution. This is language that comes directly from the state. On the first page, you know, it has a half a page of required statements that we must include. And then it has a full page of example whereas is that we could adopt all of, which I guess is what Vinyl Haven has done. Or we could, you know, select a few that we think are resonate with what we are priorities that we want to focus on here. So, um, I don't, I'm not asking for any action on this tonight, but I did just kind of want to give folks a chance to be able to read the resolution language. And if you had ideas, preferences about, um, you know, the level of detail or kind of how, how, something that we can make so that we can make this our own in a way that really reflects Islesborough's priorities in addressing community resilience. You know, I think there is a lot going on between the sea level rise committee and the energy committee. So I think there's a lot to be proud of. There's a lot of priorities that um we have the opportunity and are, you know, hoping to move forward. And uh I'm hoping that over the coming month or so, um, you know, we'll start to tailor this language to us and then ask for a vote. So if you have ideas or feedback about it between, you know, now and next meeting, that would be great. Or, you know, I'm not gonna, I don't think we're gonna have a draft next meeting to review. Either, it probably will be about a month away, but I did just kind of want to keep it on our radar so that um it wasn't a surprise when, when we asked for a vote.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you for being so on top of this. Are we, so this is for uh review and comment from the select board. And uh is the sea level rise committee going to be putting together the final draft of the select board consideration and approval?
So I, yeah, what I anticipate is that after our meeting on the sixteenth, it will help us really identify what the priorities are from the state's list, how it, how that compares to our list. The energy committee, I'm hoping, will also be a part, you know, at least some representatives will be a part of that meeting and will have a, a chance to comment, because I do think it's important that it includes, um, you know, both sides of, you know, mitigation and.
So the energy committee will be at the uh, uh, June sixteenth meeting?
We'll see. I hope, I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that there will be representatives, but. I have not reached out to them yet, because I just secured the date today. Yeah, yeah. So hopefully, hopefully we can, yes, yes.
Oh, it's the energy committee.
Any more, any questions for Shay about this or other sea level rise updates?
So probably not Shay on the next agenda, not on the June eighth.
No, yeah, but if folks have any thoughts between now and then, please reach out to me individually and I'll make sure that they're included in the draft that you see.
Next on the agenda, municipal building project update. This is for Lauren.
Yes. Well, I'm sorry to disappoint you, Linda. This isn't going to be a long update. This will be a brief update, but we can talk. Well, just this last Monday, Natalie Mursow from Gartley Doriskey came and took a look at the site back here, which is the one we hoped would work out perfectly. And we think it is going to work out perfectly, but we've still got a few hoops to jump through. She did delineate it, it's a forested wetlands, but what that means is there's no setback from the line, because it's a forested wetland. So that's good. It also doesn't require a D P, D E P authorization, because we're not building on it, you know. So just in terms of the line, but we still have to make sure that we're not in the resource protection zone, which depending on how you read the ordinances, may require a setback. If it does, uh, if it's seventy-five feet from the line that she has, then that takes us, approaches the back of this building, makes more of a narrow building. So we've got a few things to go through, um, to get that nailed down. But it should, we should have that in the next week and a half to two weeks. We should know that better.
One question, depending on how you read the ordinance, is there a dispute about how to understand the ordinance? Okay, is there something that um is ambiguous in the town ordinances? Or is this something that can be resolved by the opinion of the town's attorney?
I just talked to Vern today. He thinks the person who has to resolve it is Dave Dyer, who's out of town. The maps, it's a long story that I can't explain, maybe Janet can, but the way they laid, put the maps together and put the resource protection zone overlay on the actual maps, it was done by drone, I guess. And it's, it, I don't know, it's a long story, Mylar is involved and the maps are not very accurate. If you look at the way they have the resource protection zone, it's kind of this swoop, you know, and over at the top of the actual map. So you can see the lines, which are the boundaries for like the, the town uh plot. But over the top that is just this indistinct line, which you can't define. So you don't know exactly where it begins and where it ends. So it's gonna take some interpretation. And also the ordinances are a little hard to interpret, to be sure it doesn't require a setback.
So to the extent that we're talking about the ordinance itself, I think we're probably better off not going to Dave about that and going to the town's attorney, because if Dave has his own interpretation of how he's enforcing things, that's fine. But to the extent that gets challenged, it's gonna go beyond, to the next step beyond him. And someone else is going to be looking at that. And I think we're gonna be in a better position to um sort of support that decision. If we have uh the town's attorney saying like, this, this is what we think is the defensible position for this ordinance. And then I think that's a reasonable way to try to handle that. To make to the extent that he needs to make determination on the ground, that's a, that's a different, different question.
Yeah, it might be resolved somewhat more by the Gartley Doriskey survey, because they may be able to make these lines a little bit more clear than we can, looking at our own maps. I could show you a picture of it if you want.
You mean the tax map? Or are you talking about aerial?
The aerial, where you, where, where the town, this is not my purview. If you look at the, like for instance, a map like that up there, what they've done, when they, when they created the resource protection zone is they, they overlaid it on there, but it's these broad strokes. So even the, the width of the line makes it difficult to see exactly where one part of the plot begins and the other part. I could show you a picture of it. I didn't know I was gonna go into this, or I would have brought you now.
I think physically measuring it would answer that, which may be what, uh, Natalie?
Yeah, let's wait for the Gartley Doriskey.
On the ground, I'm not gonna get too deep into it. If there's a chance, it just resolves itself then.
Yeah. I just wanted you to know that there's still some hairy stuff out there that we need to deal with. So I guess the rest of what I want to say is, we've got another meeting coming up, probably June sixteenth, sixteenth or seventeenth. Steve Black will come back, show his next designs. The um, the committee will take a look at those and make some decisions on whether, whether that's where we want to go. Pretty soon, middle of July or middle, late June or early July, we should have the cost figures. And sometime shortly after that, we'll be bringing back both the plans and the costs and talking to the select board. That's where we're at.
Thanks, Lauren. Any questions for Lauren about this update? Questions from you, Linda?
Well, that, thank you.
Great. Moving on, uh, next on the agenda, upcoming meetings and subcommittee reports. We have a town meeting on Saturday, June fourth. One question I have is, are there masks going to be required at this meeting? I feel like the guidance is rapidly changing again for this area.
I think, you know, but what is school? They're not, no. I think we both, no, we should wait and see prior to that, but we'll have masks there, whether we required.
Who's gonna be making this determination? Is this something that you, as the town manager?
I would say, and I would talk with the health center and see. And we're gonna, we probably will try to set chairs, not normal, close like, you know, people. We've tried to do it in the front door and the back door, should hopefully be open if the weather's, so it should be, I mean, it could be, good airflow.
We should, we should get, I mean, we'll see what happens between now and then, a week and a half. I know during the beginning of the pandemic, it was a, things changed in a hurry in a, in a week and a half. We have a planning board meeting on June sixth.
Can I ask a question about the town meetings?
Yes.
Um, I just didn't know, I mean, in the past, I feel like, you know, we've given presentations or summary about kind of major issues that are on the docket. Is that something that, are you planning to make remarks, Janet? Are you ready to present kind of like how, how, you know, it's been a while since we've been here in person and shared information. So I guess I just wanted to, you know, talk through a little bit, make sure we were prepared for discussion.
So, yeah, I think.
About what in general or something in particular, I mean?
Particular issues. And I think maybe um trying to get a few people lined up to say, like, John King is the advisory board meeting.
So like summer info type, quick little.
Just information on large scale town.
Yeah, things that are included in the budget that we're gonna be at or um articles that we're gonna be asking people to vote on. I just want to make sure that we're kind of prepared to share information, because we haven't, you know, had, we've, I mean, we've had lots of workshops. It is, but it's not really having any budget impact in this fiscal.
To go through the three that we're going through every week here, the ferry service, the sea level rise and municipal building project. And then I'm trying to think about the budget and what other items might be good to talk about. I think the soccer field is one. We've seen that uh come and go as a, as a issue for quite a few years now. And now we have somebody who has spent some time and energy to um consider the field and how we can improve it and make it better, which I think is what folks wanted, you know, quite a few years ago, when we put some money aside back then. Now we've got some energy behind it. So I think that would be a good one. Perhaps we could ask Zach if he wants to talk about it. I don't know if he is attending or is interested in that, but.
I can follow up on. I think that uh the, this next meeting would be too early for a municipal building committee to present anything.
Okay.
It's pretty much where we're, we're hanging out there waiting on several things, so it's a situation. But we should have a, maybe in July, a summer information meeting. I think they used to have those and, yeah, that would be a good time.
Is there, remind me, there is money in the budget for, to continue the study, correct?
Twenty or twenty-five?
I think it's twenty-five.
I mean, I think it's worth saying that and under, you know, kind of here's where we are in the planning process. In the summer, we'll come with detailed plans, I think. Um, yeah. I, yeah, I think it's worth just saying where we are in the process and it, you know, saying it's early, I think is a better thing than saying, we don't, you know, than here's, here's what we're doing, you know, I think.
Oh, Lauren's been doing a good job too, getting information out there to PM. So that's been great.
Do the same.
Yeah. And this will be um budgets, articles can be amended.
Right. And people, you know, folks, anybody can stand up and ask a question about, you know, the budget or I think historically about anything going on in town. Sometimes that happens too. Happens at the school board, it happens, I mean, at the school's budget, happens at the town's budget, where folks will stand up and want to talk about an issue, whether it's actively up for consideration or not. Um, so that's, that's out there. I don't know if there's any, anything anybody else thinks we ought to actively try to discuss. Go ahead, Melissa.
Um, the rec budget with the dock being canceled and stuff like that with, because now like the lifeguard and different things that we initially put into the budget, I think that that would be if somebody from the rec department would stand up and talk about what they're gonna do, because that goes in line with the soccer field.
I don't think that the, the pier is canceled, it's just not.
It won't happen.
So we don't, we don't need to, there's a lot of things we don't need to fund, because it's not gonna be in place this year.
Right.
Yeah.
That was more of what I was getting to.
And I think that's a good idea to reach out to the rec committee, for sure. They can talk about.
They might wanna, yeah.
Who is, who is the chair?
I'm not sure.
Melissa's still on the rec committee?
She is. Mary Alderman was, but she got off and, and no one else wanted to be the chair. But I'm sure Melissa Jagger would.
Can you reach out to Melissa or Mary and just see uh if, if either of those two will confirm that they or someone from that committee will speak on, on that issue? Because it may be that we want um even one of those people to make the motion from the floor to amend the budget. So we don't need to be funding positions that are not going to exist, for sure.
I was gonna say, I mean, I guess I wonder if, so certainly a lifeguard for the pier is not going to, but I don't know if the rec committee is still considering doing swim lessons off of the beach or if they even have the information, you know, as this thing has evolved, if they even know yet. So I guess I also just want to be a little bit careful about asking people to make, to speak on behalf of a committee that may not have had time to meet or think through. Um, so I think it's okay to acknowledge that that landscape is changing. And if somebody wants to amend the budget from the floor, I think that's fair. But I, I would just be, maybe raise it as, if, if somebody is there, if they have something to say, it would be great to have somebody who can say, give an update, but I would hate for them to, you know, it's changed pretty quickly, so.
I, I mean, if you're giving, if you're giving swim lessons, it's from the beach, you can't start at the dock with a swim lesson. So it's probably, that part could continue, I would think. I'm not even sure that they can still put the dock in. If we can get a plan and they can bring it back to the planning board, um, it's just, they just want to see something with regard to safety. I still think things can, not between now and the meeting on the fourth.
The idea of getting a pier constructed between now and the time where kids, we want to be taking swim lessons. Right. I mean, I'm, I'm not personally gonna be building that pier, but it strikes me as a difficult timeline.
But I, but I mean, you don't need a dock to do swim lessons. In fact, it's not the way to go.
But I think that if you're doing swim lessons, you don't need a lifeguard.
No, you do, because you do need a lifeguard in order to have swim lessons.
That would be the, because what Melissa had told me was that the director, um, Lou Lou, maybe? Uh, one of them is becoming certified in order to do it. She wanted to bring in an entirely separate lifeguard. That would be up there for the dock. I thought it was two different ones that was separate.
You have an instructor and a lifeguard, is my understanding. When, when they were here talking about it, you need to have a lifeguard on duty while an instructor is teaching somebody. You need to have like two people there.
I think it was, it wasn't around six thousand dollars.
So I, I just, I think for how much money is in the budget for it.
Right.
Seems like maybe highlighting it causes more problems than it.
We don't want to foreclose the possibility of teaching kids to swim from the beach.
Right.
I will talk to Melissa.
Yeah, but I do think giving them a heads up to say, we would love to have somebody be there and just aware if questions come up, we'd love to have them be able to speak. That feels more comfortable than asking them to kind of proactively make a speech here.
Is that a better way to do it as articles come up? Instead of, were you thinking you wanted people like about these three top subjects, but they may not have?
I'm thinking before, I think before, it doesn't hurt to give an update, especially because we haven't had an in-person meeting with the entire town for years now. And it doesn't hurt to say, here's a quick weather report of issues that are on the, you know, on the burner for the town right now.
Yeah, but that's not the time to address um like the soccer field. So you want to wait, you should wait, I think, until it gets to recreation, until it gets to that.
Address that during the budget. Uh, it's sort of hard, because a lot of times, a lot of people leave after the appointments to the select board and. Address that during the budget. Uh, it's sort of hard because a lot of times a lot of people leave after the appointments to the select board and school board, but that's.
And the school goes first this year.
Oh, yeah.
So really.
But I also think like, we can't, like you said, this is not, it, it can't both be an informational meeting and go through all the articles because people will be really running for the door. So I do think it's a bit of a balance between, so, I mean, maybe we don't necessarily need a strategy. I just, I just want to acknowledge that, you know, I don't want to have lots and lots of presentations ahead of every article. Because it will encourage people to either vote everything up without thinking or vote everything down out of.
And ask the question.
Do we want to just?
Have to answer.
Right. That's what I think is, yeah.
Do we want to hold off on, we, we want to just develop a slate of people who are going to be there and available to take questions as they come up? As opposed to having any being active.
Yes.
We'll have, I mean, the issues that I can see, ferry service, sea level rise, municipal building, uh, the soccer field, the recreation committee of potential where we might want to just have somebody who's prepared and who's thought about it and is aware that if questions come up, it's going to be them who will ask the answers. So they're a little bit more prepared than they otherwise might be.
Because we usually do have announcements early on, then people start getting fancy. There may be someone who's running, maybe a politician coming over. There may be.
There is the sheriff, the new sheriff is planning on coming.
We have to be careful. So this is before we open the meeting. So we just want to get going, you know, when you're, but, you know, we usually do take 10 or 15 minutes to let, you know, things like that.
Yeah, we're going to have, imagine we're going to ask the candidates for the various seats to say something. Because historically been what we've done. So we've got two people here who need to be prepared. And I don't know, I don't think there's anybody from, who's taken up papers for the school yet, so.
Has nobody taken?
I suspect there'll be people nominated from the floor, I hope.
Oh, yeah.
Do the people have to be present?
They don't have to be present, but it's hard if they haven't affirmatively represented, they're willing to accept the seat.
Right.
Which has come up before.
It's been done.
It has been done. I, I was there one, one year when it happened. Yeah, I called Jay.
Yeah.
And he confirmed that he would be on the select board if he was.
It's always those surprise ones, you know, if they think ahead that they, oh, yeah, tell them something, oh, it's fine if you nominate me. They should let Tina or me or someone know. So we say, oh, yeah, we did hear and they are willing.
It can be hard when people get nominated from the floor and the people who get nominated did not expect to be nominated. That happens sometimes. Someone stands up and, Tina, you get nominated. All right. So I guess with that, then the, the approach moving forward is Janet, you're going to contact folks from these various areas. Uh, John King for sea level rise, I mean, not for sea level rise, for ferry service. We're just going to voice it all on.
He can do it.
Lauren will be ready for municipal building project update to the extent that any questions come up. Uh, perhaps you'll reach out to Zach and see if he wants to be prepared to talk about the soccer field, um, if that comes up during the budget, um, as well as maybe Melissa for the recreation committee.
Yeah, because you don't want to turn it into a public hearing.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, and probably it can be a little thoughtful depending on if it gets off the rails. We might just have to shut it down and, and it's a conversation for the next select board.
That's where our moderator takes over. Who's our moderator? I never know.
To be elected.
But it won't be Craig Olson. You can't either. But I'm hoping Paige, unless someone else.
Tom Tudor.
Tom Tudor. Tom Tudor? Yeah, whoever gets voted.
Anyway.
Just looking at my very first one.
I'm excited.
I just show you this.
That's your megatap.
Sorry. No, that's what I'm talking about. In general, because we haven't asked about that in years. That's, oh, right, right. Well, that's right.
Not to expend.
Oh, yeah.
Great block.
Energy. Yeah, yeah, energy committee too, just in case.
Myra would be a good one. I was going to say, yeah, she's, she's a good.
And this is not going to be an opportunity to give a presentation. It's going to be.
They have a budget article.
Answer questions.
So that would be a great time.
Yeah.
They can, they can respond to questions. Okay, town managers report.
Yeah, okay. Um, so I've given you the minutes. Uh, I've given you minutes from the April 12th energy committee meeting, minutes of the May 3rd Isle's for a housing committee meeting. An email from John Kerr about the PFAS testing. Uh, he received notification that the DEP has sent out bids in their due back June 3rd and the work is required to be completed by September 30th. So he expects to hear more when they've hired a contractor to do these tests around the state. Um, and an email, uh, from Island Institute about the ferry service needs assessment survey, which is coming out soon, it should be. Um, a copy of the letter dated May 16th from Isle's for Islands Trust to Commissioner Bruce that note regarding, uh, uh, rural applications, state transportation facilities, Sears Island preliminary geotechnical exploration. And, uh, given you warrant 24 and the recap. And just my news is that Cindy's last, Cindy Gorin, Cindy Pinkham Gorin, this last day is going to be May 31st. Um, and we'll be having, uh, refreshments for her in the afternoon. So if anybody wants to come by and wish her well and have a piece of cake and.
Anybody apply for that job?
I've had a couple of applications, but I'm still expecting another. So I haven't really kind of just, um, in the holding pattern right now, but.
Was there a deadline for?
So that's it for me.
Okay, correspondence, none. Old business, none. New business, none. Other business, none.
I would move that we approve warrant number 24.
Moved by Shay.
Second.
Second by Warren. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. You guys are fast from your.
Um, next on the agenda is appointments. We have, uh, Ginny Hess for the housing committee. I thought we already pointed her to this, but I guess not.
We did, then she got removed, then she went back. I'm leaving, she's joining.
Okay, so I would, I would, uh, accept a, a motion to approve Ginny Hess as the, as an appointed to the housing committee. So moved by Phil.
I actually just met her yesterday for the. I actually just met her yesterday.
All in favor for that motion?
Aye.
Aye, aye. It is unanimous. We get through it. Uh, chair comments, none. Vice chair comments, Shay.
I don't have any.
Phil. Don't come. Lauren.
None.
Melissa gets the last word.
No, thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you. We're here every two.